It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Boards. My left Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioners Carolina Mejia and Commissioner Emily Claus and Zoom. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Jennifer Walker and Josh Cummings. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We are here primarily to review a draft agenda for the February 18th. First review of that agenda, so we'll pull that forward. The meeting is scheduled to begin at 2:00 p.m. with Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Fornier.
Ooh, it's my turn.
Yep. Land acknowledgement and approval of agenda. We'll have a presentation for African American History Month.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. For this proclamation presentation, our speakers include Larry Jefferson, Director of the Washington State Office of Public Defense and President of the NAACP of Thurston County, Dr. Thelma Jackson, author of Blacks in Thurston County Community Album, and Merritt Long, author of My View from the Back of the Bus. And we've included other local groups from local colleges to attend and join us in our celebration. The presentation will be followed by a quick recess for some photos on the stairwell and some social gathering.
Yeah, this is our first one to open this up and draw the needed attention to some of these very important topics. I want to give a special thanks to Ellen Massey, who works in Central Services, is working with Amy Davis, and then all of your team as well, Commissioners, who have sent ideas forward. We're going to continue to do this once a month, and your input on groups that we need to be inviting to some of the proclamations is greatly appreciated. So, thank you staff and thank you Commissioner T.
Is there, excuse me, what is, is there like a guesstimate of time for our recess?
I think fifteen minutes or so would be appropriate.
Okay. Questions for Amy on this item?
Excuse me?
Okay, thank you. Public comment, County Manager update, anything you're...
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Then we have consent agenda A through U. Item 5A, interlocal agreement between Thurston County Conservation District and Thurston County Auditor regarding elections for the 2025 Conservation District election. I'm Tilly, I'm pretty polar.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you were quiet, but try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you pretty well.
Perfect, thank you. Good morning, Tilly Nappasipolar Elections Manager subbing for Thurston County Auditor Maria Hall this morning. We are here to ask for approval for the interlocal agreement between Thurston County Conservation District and the Thurston County Auditor Elections Office relating to conducting the April 18th, March 2025 Conservation District election. This interlocal agreement identifies responsibilities between the two agencies. Our, the Auditor Elections Department's responsibilities include providing the poll book of registered voters residing in the district and conducting the signature verification training of those returned ballots. The Conservation District, for information, includes the entire county with the exception of the city limits of Yelm, Rainier, and Tenino from 1948. So currently, right now, the entire county minus 2,500 voters in Thurston County are eligible for this election. Any questions for me?
Can you, I'm curious, I mean, I've heard the process for the Conservation District elections in the past. Is it basically the same? Has anything changed in the last year or two regarding how they go about their election? You have to, in terms of, you know, you have to go out and get, kind of affirmatively get your ballot if you want to participate?
Correct. One of the things that I do want you to know or acknowledge that the Conservation District does have a separate RCW statute than what we govern with, and that's ours is 29A, Conservation District has RCW 89.08. And in that chapter does talk about their requirements or their expectations for their election. Voters who would like to get a ballot actually do have to contact the Conservation District, either by telephone or email to the district themselves. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Mensur, to answer you, there's no changes from last year.
Okay, so if folks want to get involved in this election, they go to the Thurston Conservation District website, is that the best place to go?
Perfect, that is. They do have a couple of pages, talks about their FAQs for their specific election, and they do have their contact information there.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for Tilly? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 5B is proclamation for National FFA Week.
My name is Amy, Commissioners. For this proclamation, we've invited the FFA advisors of the Rochester, Rainier, Tenino, Yelm, North Thurston, Kimberline, and Riverbridge High Schools.
Invited them to attend the meeting?
Yes, to end, to...
To comment if they would like.
To give comment, yes.
During the public comment?
Yes.
Questions for this? Nope, all right. Item C is resolution to add full-time equivalency with an end date. Initial assistant position for Superior Court, HR.
Good morning, Maria Ponte, HR Director. This request is coming from the Superior Court. In 2024, they had an employee that went out on a long-term leave of absence. They had staff that rallied around and performed those duties, but the individual is still out, and Superior Court is looking to add. We call it a position with end date. In some places, it's called a term limited position, and it would be effective through the end of this year. And there is no budget request because Superior Court will cover the cost of this position with salary savings. Is there any questions I can answer?
I'm not seeing any. Nope, no questions. Next one up is item D, resolution to establish position prosecuting attorney investigator and add the position to the Thurston County Position Control Schedule.
This request is coming out of a prosecuting attorney's office, and they have the privilege of having received a three-year grant from the Department of Justice Office of Crime Victims Advocacy. They're requesting that we create a new position, prosecutor, criminal investigator, that will perform the domestic violence investigation work. This initiative will save lives and significantly enhance our community's ability to combat domestic violence. The program's success will be measured by the number of high-risk cases investigated and prosecuted and reductions in domestic violence homicides countywide. The prosecutor is here today, if you have any specifics, any specific questions about the position? The salary range of the position is a range 12, and on the high end with salary and benefits for a cost of $112,000.
Questions for Maria or Prosecutor Tunheim, who's here, if needed?
I have none.
Okay. Item E, resolution to appoint Commissioner Mejia to Washington County Risk Pool Board of Directors.
Risk Manager Brian is here, and Brian Bishop, and he'll present on this.
Good morning Commissioners, Brian Bishop, County Risk Manager. County belongs to the Washington County's Risk Pool and for our liability and property insurance. The Risk Pool's interlocal agreement and bylaw state that we appoint at least one director from each member county to the Board of Directors of the Risk Pool. This item is to request the Board appoint County Commissioner Mejia as Director, alternate Director Wayne Fornier, and second alternate John Tunheim, third alternate myself, and fourth alternate Director is Risk Analyst Amy Albright. Any questions?
Who has, I don't recall ever doing this before, who has been appointed?
I'll back up. We did this last year. Commissioner Fornier was the Director.
Okay, it was an honor.
At the request of the Commissioners, Commissioner Mejia has asked to be the Director, and maybe not asked.
I did not ask, got the sign.
Okay.
I got told.
After a very competitive process, she was selected.
Shifting around duties of the Commissioners. Shifting around duties of the Commissioners, Commissioner Mejia graciously accepted to be Director.
Any questions on the County Risk Pool Board of Directors? Nope, all right, thank you. Item F, contract award with Axon Justice Premier for amendment to electronic evidence services.
Morning Commissioners, Sheri Ild, IT Director. I, and Patrick O'Connor's here, if you have any additional questions for him. I'm seeking approval to amend the Axon Justice Premier contract, adding 13 additional licenses for public defense for the remainder of the 10-year contract. The total cost over 10 years is $184,000, which will impact public defense rates by less than $20,000 each year.
Uh, okay, and that's, I guess, the motivation is new positions? I mean, 13th, why 13?
I believe it's their contract attorneys.
Good morning Commissioners, that's correct. When we initially submitted our bid for licenses, we were short licenses, and this makes up that gap.
Any other questions for Sheri? I'm not hearing any, thank you. You're not going anywhere, so. All right, item G, request for proposals for parcel fabric migration to new version of GIS software.
So our GIS software environment, it's also known as ESRI, will be stopping support for all versions earlier than 10.9 as of March of 2026. So we're trying to get ahead of that shutdown of support. The newer version is cloud-based and it's software as a service. In order for us to be successful in the upgrade of our software to this newer platform, we must migrate the parcel information first. The process of migration requires knowledge, skills, and abilities that IT and the assessor's office do not have available to them. I am seeking approval to publish a request for proposal to solicit bids from vendors that can migrate this data for us, provide user training, and develop user documentation for the assessor's office. This amount is already in our 2025 budget and is funded by rates charged to appropriate offices and departments.
Questions?
But I will comment that I think it's great that, you know, that you're seeking, you know, someone to come in to actually do the work, and I'm sure that's a load off of the rest of your staff. And so, congratulations, and I think it's great that, you know, we're working towards...
Thank you for that support.
Thank you.
Next up is item 5H, sale of tax title property via public auction. Treasurer Gadman, good morning. And we've got just one, okay.
Well, and then I got the next item too, for just one tax title. So, good morning Commissioners, County Treasurer Jeff Gadman, thank you for your time this morning. We collaborated with Central Services to send out letters to adjacent property owners of tax title properties, hoping to whittle down the inventory as much as we can, and this is one of those properties. This particular property had multiple interests. It is near the corner of Shady Lane and Trillium in Lacey. It's a weird little triangle property. It's only going to benefit an adjacent property owner. We had multiple interests, two of the adjacent property owners, and so proposing to put it out for public auction. And they're both aware that that's the route that we're going.
Questions on tax title property? All right, to keep you up for item I, write-off of uncollectible personal property taxes.
Yeah, this is an annual ritual. I'm coming to you to report to you. Uncollectible business property taxes or mobile homes. And this requires your approval to approve the write-off of the taxes. A lot of these are business closed, disappeared, we have no idea where their equipment went. In some cases, it's mobile homes that have been destroyed with taxes owing. The total this year is 23,000, a little under 23,400. In the years that I've been doing this, that's about in the average range. It's usually between, or right around 20,000, 25,000.
Okay, questions on the personal property tax write-offs? Nope, all right. Thank you, Treasurer.
Thank you, enjoy your day everybody, stay warm. Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we got item J, burn grant subaward to WAPA for prosecutor workload study. And Prosecutor Tunheim, good morning.
Good morning. So, I'm just gonna take a minute, give you some background on this grant and how we've come to make this proposal to give it to, essentially, transfer the grant to the Washington Association of Prosecuting Attorneys. Many years ago, when the Supreme Court established the caseload standards for defense lawyers, prosecutors approached the Supreme Court and basically asked the question, why then don't you establish workload standards for prosecutors or caseload standards? To which the Supreme Court basically said, we're not doing that because the prosecutor is an executive branch lawyer, and we think it's, that would interfere with the separation of powers between the branches. So we kind of accepted that answer and moved on. And since that time, I had been interested in trying to do some kind of workload study in my office, just to get an idea of what is the appropriate workload for a prosecutor? Because those, that had never been done in the state of Washington. So in one of our burn grant applications, we asked for funding to do that, and we were awarded the grant, this is the 2022 burn grant. And then we went out looking for a vendor who could do that, and we did not find anything. So we've been, we'd kind of been working on that project, but we couldn't find anybody who could do it at that, on that scale for that amount of money. In the meantime, the Prosecuting Attorneys Association had started talking about doing a statewide prosecutor workload study for the same reason. Particularly now that caseloads are so much part of... The caseload standards for public defense are so in the forefront of everything right now, and the Supreme Court's looking at revising those. And so prosecutors wanted to undertake this statewide study so that we could actually look at prosecutor workload using Washington data and actually using Washington, our system, if you will, as opposed to the public defense study, which uses a national study. So, the Prosecuting Attorneys Association has essentially raised the funding to do this, but given that we had this burn grant money for this purpose, that had already been awarded for this purpose, I went back to the grantor, the government entity that manages this grant, and we asked them if we could simply subaward this to WAPA as part of that project, since Thurston County will be participating in that project, and we will get our workload standards from that, to which they have approved that. So they've approved the subaward, and from their standpoint, they are good to go. And so, basically, I'm here to finalize the approval of this, to pass the grant through our system and to the Prosecuting Attorneys Association for this study. So, maybe a little bit more than you needed to know, but I wanted you to make, I want to make sure you have the background of how we got here and what we're trying to achieve.
So I do have a couple of questions. So, so what you're, I think what you're saying, and I appreciate the background, because I needed that, right? That, so that WAPA is planning to do a state, which is really great news, by the way, that they're planning to do a statewide study. So would they, without this money, would we have been, we would have been charged by WAPA to be a part of that study?
Not necessarily, because, not in the same amount, because the remaining cost is getting spread out throughout the counties. So all the counties are kind of bearing that. The reason that I looked into just allocating this is because it was a sum of money that had already been allocated for this project. And so what it did is it kind of alleviated the burden across the distribution to all of the other counties, if that makes sense.
So essentially, this, you're using awarded grant funding instead of waiting to have us charged, and then it would have been general fund?
Uh, probably, yes.
So, excellent, good job, and I think this is a great idea. And what, who's burn, who's burn grant?
Burn grant's a long, it's a longstanding criminal justice grant program that's been going on with the federal government as long as I've been around, yeah. I think it was, I think it's named for a former senator or something that spearheaded the program.
Just hadn't heard of it, but federal, makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, awesome, this is great news.
Any other questions for the prosecutor? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I also appreciate that background, so thank you for coming. Item K is Board of Health Chair and Vice Chair.
Hello, Jennifer Hay, Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is regarding the nominations of our new Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Health. So, Dr. Beth Harvey as the new Chair, and then Commissioner Mejia as the remaining Vice Chair.
This is one I don't remember ever doing this before, is this a new process that we're taking?
I wasn't sure, so we put it through this way, thinking this was the way it was done. But I can do it in whatever way you think.
It has been done this way in the past.
I don't remember.
Good morning Commissioners, approving.
Appointing the Board of Health Chair and Vice Chair.
Well, I think that was when it was the three of us, because then, you know, it was... But then, since it's expanded.
Amy, was it done last year?
Through the variation of changes.
I... Is there a policy that says that we have to do it this way?
Not a policy, but I'm pretty sure we did do it last year. Because we had the three new members last year, so it was the official nomination of them joining the Board of Health.
Yes, and...
Alongside the Chair and Vice Chair.
I remember the, the kind of reaffirmation of the three members that joined. I don't remember the Chair and Vice Chair, but I might be missing.
I don't recall myself, but it won't hurt to have it on there, and then we can maybe look into official bylaw or whatever.
It's not in the bylaws, so it was... Should we do this? How do we do this?
I don't think it hurts, I was just wondering.
If we can look into it and talk to the legal team, just to see if it's not necessary, then we won't bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, the, I mean, now that we have two separate bodies, Commissioners could not approve that, and that might not be appropriate. Board of Health can choose their own Chair, they should be able to do that without interference from the Board of County Commissioners, if that's, you know...
I'll get an answer right away.
Okay.
Makes sense, this level of process could interfere with the Board of Health's level of process.
Or is it a check and balance that you want there?
We'll get a review from our legal team and then come back with. But the staff identified that it has been done in the past, so.
Especially when we're not all on the Board of Health too. We refuse to recognize the legitimacy of the chairmanship.
Well, and I would, I would just recommend that it would be great if, once we do this research, if we could come back and adjust whatever policy, bylaw, whatever needs to be done, so it... Because this is essentially, if it just keeps happening, it's because it's not written somewhere. And we, you know, I think we should adjust it, so it's very clear what, who is supposed to approve and how we move forward.
All right, so it'll stay on here for now, and subject to potential readdressing. And then next, we have item L, Board of Health Administrative Officer.
Great, thank you. This has come before the Board before. It was always in the past the named Director. So for example, David Bain's name is still currently on the books for this one. So, the request to the Board of Health was that the, that it no longer just be the name, it just automatically says the Director of Public Health and Social Services to make it more longstanding and generic, and so that is this request that the Board of Health approved.
Okay, straightforward, talked about that a couple of times. Next up is item M, contract award for the Effective Communication Coach Five Series Training.
Yes, this was for the RFQQ that was brought before you, to be able to look at various contractors who would provide various communications training, diversity, equity, and inclusion trainings. They include such topics as microaggressions, intergenerational communications, how these topics pertain to a person's role in their, their current government work. And so a contracted position was chosen through a deep metric assessment with a team of people who looked through all of the... who looked through all of the proposals. And so the Effective Communication Coach was the top proposal and it's still at the $75,000 mark that was approved previously. Four, five series that will happen relatively quickly because they need to be wrapped up before June 30th, when the funding must be spent.
And where is the funding coming from?
It is coming from the Workforce Development Grant, which is federal indirect through the State Department of Health and has been pre-approved by the State Department of Health.
Questions on this item? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item N, also Public Health and Social Services, Homeless Services Advisory Board Member Appointments. You have Michael Jenkins, Dana Evans. Tom, is this your item?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon, good morning Commissioners, Tom Webster with the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention, joined by Caden Hill, from our office as well, who supports the lead staff to the Homeless Services Advisory Board. We're here today, we're gonna ask for your permission to appoint two members to the Homeless Services Advisory Board, which supports the Regional Housing Council, that is Michael Jenkins and Dana Evans. The Board currently has 10 members, this would bring the Board up to 12 members. 14 is the, is the max for that Board, so we're looking to add a few new members. These folks were interviewed on January 7th by representatives of the Advisory Boards and the Regional Housing Council, approved this recommendation, is bringing forth this recommendation on their January 22 meeting. So happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No, I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, moving on to item O, Request for Proposals for Washington State Accredited Laboratory Analysis of Surface and Groundwater Samples.
Good morning Commissioners, Stuart Whitford, Environmental Health Program Manager. So this relates to our Ambient Monitoring Program that we have and Ambient Water Quality Monitoring Program that we have in Thurston County that's been around since the late 80s, I believe. And this is to secure laboratory services to support that effort for the next three years to kind of better protect our budget, you know, insulate it from inflation and things like that. So basically, we're asking you to move to authorize us to issue a request for proposals for Washington State Accredited Laboratory Analysis of Surface and Groundwater Samples collected as set forth in the Memorandum of Agreement between Public Health and Social Services and Community Planning and Economic Development for Water Quality Monitoring. This is funded by Stormwater Utility Funds. We currently monitor 33 streams and nine lakes. This particular RFP would primarily be for nutrient samples, for nitrogen and phosphorus species, and because all of our E. coli bacteria samples go to our own laboratory at Lilly. So that's what this is about.
Questions for Stuart?
So currently, the process is we do the internally do?
For E. coli bacteria, yeah, which is our, like our main indicator of public health for our streams, that is done in, at our in-house laboratory at Lilly Road. But these other, for nutrients, we have to ship them to a private laboratory for that analysis. And so this is intended to accomplish that for the next three years.
And do we currently have a contract for someone?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an extension or we're gonna put an RFP back out?
This is gonna be a brand new, brand new contract for the next three years.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, those answer my questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Item P, public works, resolution to apply for a grant from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board for Stedman Road Southeast at unnamed Spurgeon Creek Tributary Fish Passage.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Manager Matt Unsmann, County Engineer. This item's requesting permission to apply for $135,000 from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, specifically through the Salmon Recovery Funding Board to complete a pre-designed study to remove a fish barrier on an unnamed creek crossing on Stedman Road about a mile south of Rainier Road. A local match is not required for this grant. The study will identify the preferred alternative, which will allow us to go and search for subsequent phases, the design, right-of-way, construction, funding for this project. So once constructed, fish such as Coho Salmon, Steelhead, and Cutthroat Trout will be able to access an additional one mile of stream habitat.
Is there a, is this particular barrier being requested because it's like top of our priority list or does it, is it qualifying in some way?
This came through our Fish Passages Program, so all of our projects are prioritized within our Fish Passages Program.
And this is the one we wanted?
This amongst, we have many, many Fish Passages that we need to address.
Right, but we're choosing this one to apply for the grant.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Other questions? We'll leave it. All right, good luck. Next up is Q, Resolution to Apply for a Grant for, oh, okay, we got more, from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, or Surf Board as they call it, to, for unnamed Independence Creek Tributary at Backman Road.
So this is, if it looks familiar, it's because it is very familiar. We're applying for the exact same amount from this same funding source to perform a study on Backman Road about 1,000 feet south of Independence Road. So this is just within the Thurston County line, north of Lewis County. This study will again identify that preferred alternative and give staff the opportunity to go out and search for opportunities for subsequent phases. And on this one, once the barriers removed, we'll gain an additional five miles of fish habitat.
Questions on item Q? Nope? All right, good, thank you. Item R, Resolution to Call for Seal Bids for Pavement Milling Machine Rental.
All right, I'm bench hitting for Mike Loman on this one, our Road Operations Manager. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for seal bids for a contract to rent a pavement milling machine. Public Works is responsible for maintaining more than 1,000 miles of roadway and a pavement milling machine is required to perform those services. This contract will provide a pavement milling machine in the spring and fall annually for a three-year period. The estimated cost is about $90,000, so the overall contract cost will be about $270,000.
Questions on this one? Who should we hear?
It's a milling machine.
AKA a pavement grinder. So what it does is often to perform the repair, you have to remove the, the poor pavement and put in new pavement. So this is removing the poor pavement before we can put in the new pavement.
Every time we do this, we have to rent one?
Yeah. Well, for this scale, so what we do is we save up all of our larger projects for the good weather season, which is in the summer. If we have smaller repairs, we do have our own smaller machines that can do it. But for efficiencies, it makes a lot more sense to use a bigger machine to accomplish some of the larger areas.
So you kind of wait and then we rent one and then you do all the fixing and then we use the little one in between?
Yep.
Cool, thanks, thanks for that.
The size of the grinder is such that it comes with its own operator and its own mechanic.
Oh, so we also save.
A very expensive piece of equipment.
I see, so we're also saving operational, like, time too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
For your efficiency.
Okay, very good, thank you. Item S is Resolution for Temporary Closure of Veil Road from 110th to State Route 507.
All right, so this next item's requesting permission to temporarily close Veil Road from 110th Avenue to State Route 507 for up to nine months within a time period between August 1st, 2026 and July 31st, 2027. This closure is needed to accommodate the construction of the State Route 507 and Veil Road Roundabout Project. Temporarily closing the road's the safest, least expensive, and quickest option to successfully complete the project. We will not be preventing access to any private property. This section of Veil Road has an average traffic volume of 7,473 vehicles. A three-mile detour will be put in place, which will utilize Bald Hill Road and State Route 507, and it will take about seven minutes to navigate. So the big question is, is why am I asking for a road closure a year and a half ahead of doing the project? And it's just because we need to be able to plan for the project. And whether the road is closed or not goes a long ways in determining how we prepare our plans, specifications, and estimate to perform the work.
Questions on item, you have Commissioner Grant?
And then, so I'm guessing that this is in coordination with folks in Yelm and, and their, their groups out there, right?
Yeah, and actually, there's three roundabout projects being built on 507. And so, yes, we've been coordinating a lot with the city of Yelm because their roundabout at the intersection of Bald Hill, they're well on their way as well. The other roundabout, State Route 702, I'm not, I don't think Pierce County is as far, so we, there's not as much coordination with that one, but there has been some coordination with the city of Yelm for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
And if I can put a plug in, we have an open house for this project on February 26th at 5 o'clock PM at Prairie Elementary School.
Say that again?
So it'll be, excuse me, I said 5 o'clock, 5:30 at Prairie Elementary School on February 26th.
Okay.
Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
I'll try to attend if I can.
That'd be awesome.
And that's part of the outreach, so that people know this is gonna happen.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other advantage of coming out a year and a half ahead of time is we need to be able to communicate this and this will give us that opportunity.
This is exciting, nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would suggest, I know it's really busy right now for the legislature, but Representative Barkus was very essential in helping us get funding and partnering with us, and so maybe an invite over.
Yeah, for sure. We're actually gonna, I'm gonna personally send him an invite and we've been keeping him updated as the project goes along as well.
I believe his office has reached out and you've been in communication directly with his office, correct?
With.
We've provided updates.
Yes, we've provided updates to Representative Barkus.
And just for clarification, this, this is a state project that the county is doing for the state.
Right, right.
All done.
Thank you. I'm still here.
But they didn't want to give us full funding for it first.
Okay, we'll go to item T, Setting a Public Hearing to Consider Application of Woodard Place Water Company for a Non-Exclusive Franchise for a Water Distribution System Within Thurston County Right-of-Way.
All right, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing for March 18th, 2025, to consider a franchise agreement of Woodard Place Water Company to construct and maintain a water distribution system within the right-of-way on South Bay Road. State law requires a public hearing to be held on franchise applications. Construction includes installing a line beneath South Bay Road on 26th Avenue that connects a residence to a community well system on the other side of the roadway.
Questions on this, March 18th, public hearing?
Can you just give me the plain talk on this? So, so more or less, we're gonna, we have to put water underneath the road and so then we have to have a hearing to do that? Is that kinda?
Yes, we do. So anytime anybody wants to install a utility beneath the roadway, so in this case, the community well system is on one side of the road, but there's one house on the other side of the road, so they have to push a line underneath the roadway. So what we'll do is enter into a franchise agreement with that utility that basically indemnifies the county and then also all of the long-term requirements associated with that.
How does the house across the street get water now? Like, are they on a well and then they're asking to be tapped in? Is that kind of what it is?
So what happened is there's a, the house across, they're already, they're already connected and they never went through the process before. And now they're having to go through and upgrade their line. So to do it correctly, they're gonna come on board with a franchise agreement.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, that's helpful.
That's, that's not uncommon that.
That's not uncommon at all.
Things have developed and as they go back and have to make changes, that we have to bring folks up to. Appropriate place, but the indemnification's really important. If that line were to break in the road, then the county would be on the hook for that, so appreciate your.
Yeah, and some of these are, were previously owned by the PUD or, and they've come out, not the situation with this one, but that's, there's several of those were, you know, they, they were managed by the PUD before and so they were under that franchise agreement with the county. But as they've moved out of the PUD managing them and self-managing, a lot of them, you know, we have to renew those franchise agreements, but the community just didn't know, so that's things that happen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item U, Write-offs of Uncollectable Public Works Department Accounts Receivable. Karen Reese, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Karen Reese, Public Works Director. So like Treasurer Gadman, this is a housekeeping item annually and it's part of our closeout of our financial statements for the year. So as we analyze our accounts receivable at the end of the year and compliance with county policies, we identify those accounts that are six years or more outstanding. I do want to take this opportunity to brag on our finance group. We are asking for write-offs of $1,552.19 and I want to put that in the context of our solid waste accounts receivable, or for account, solid waste revenue for the year is over 29 million. And our receivables at the end of 2024 are about 1.3 million, so this is a really, really infinites, it's a very small amount. And we do have no water and sewer utility accounts to write off and we bring in over $4 million in revenue that, for those annually. So we have a really rigorous process that we go through to analyze our accounts on an ongoing basis and try to minimize those losses for the county. Questions?
Not on the detail of that.
Thank you.
There's a lot of work day in and day out.
Well, they're, they're, they're great at what they're doing.
And I'll just comment that that's amazing. I mean, that, you know, this is like a point 0002 percentage of total collectibles, so someone must be doing an amazing job because this is really incredible.
Well, it starts, it starts at the Waste Recovery Center with our Shoal House staff. I'll give them credit for managing it well and then, you know, for the few accounts that come to the finance group, we have a, we send them to a collection agency, we follow up with lots of, lots of correspondence. They have lots of opportunities to pay.
Nice, well, good job. Tell them all good job.
That's cool.
Thank you. I noticed Commissioner Grant, you're good at math, so I'm gonna file that away. Future reference.
He was a budget chief for a year.
Might need that. All right, let's go to item 6A, Central Services On-Call Architectural Engineering and Professional Consulting Services Contracts.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners, Rick Thomas, the Capitol Projects Planning Manager. And today, in order to augment and supplement our staff's technical abilities, Central Services solicited a request for qualifications for architect and engineering and professional consulting services to support our planning, design, construction, and other activities related, related to our county facilities. On November 27th of 2024, 15 firms submitted statements of qualifications in response to the RFQ. A committee of Central Services staff evaluated and scored the proposals based on the company's qualifications, key personnel, experience, past performance, and sustainability. The committee selected the top-ranked firms to place under contract, thereby creating a roster of qualified architect and engineering firms, which will allow our staff to quickly respond to Central Services requirements on an ads-needed or an on-call basis. Work will be defined on individual task orders for each scope of work needed, and each task order will require a second-tier evaluation and selection of the best qualified consultant from the roster to perform the work. The schedule and fee will be negotiated. The on-call contracts are proposed to be a base term of two years plus three one-year options. Each contract is independent and will be judged separately for extension as appropriate for Central Services needs. Funding for the work performed under the on-call contracts will come from various sources. Each on-call consultant will be awarded a $550,000, a $500,000 contract against which individual task orders will be issued. This is the same process utilized by Public Works as we are. This is the same process utilized by Public Works as we operate to be consistent across the county. These actions are, th- this action is needed for us to accomplish the cap, the county's capital improvement program for our two thousand twenty-five to thirty cycle. Um, on previous, our previous on-call consultant contracts expired on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. And so we're asking the Board of County Commissioners to authorize our central services director to award um nine on-call contracts to support our efforts. Questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Questions, Rick?
Um, I do have a question. Um, and so, um, are the, I'm sorry, I was typing very beginning of what you're saying, so I just want to acknowledge that. So if I missed it, um, it's my fault. Um, but the, but the nine different um people that were chosen, are they all the the same as our previous contracts, or have we added a few new people?
We uh, we've added a few, and we've not awarded to some that we had.
Okay.
Previously. There's some overlap, but not completely correct.
Okay, just out of curiosity.
Any other questions on this item?
Let me straight forward.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner reports for follow-up, and then we'll be adjourned. So that takes us to uh, next up is advisory boards. We have a packet. I'll look to the clerk to walk us through that.
Uh, today we are just circling back on a couple from last week. The Civil Service Commission and the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees Mason County Appointment. I was sort of the Civil Service Commission. Um, so we had um received a couple of confirmations from the questions last week. The questions were, uh, does the applicant reside in Thurston County or Lewis County because their address is a Centralia address? Maybe they reside in Thurston County, just between Grand Mount and Centralia. The next question was, what is the applicant's political affiliation? Um, the applicant is Republican leaning. Commissioner Martin is independent, and Commissioner Browning is unaffiliated. At the time of appointment, uh, no more than two members may be of the same political party. So the applicant is eligible.
If that's said, I'd like to see it added to the agenda to appoint Nicole Seek.
He did receive um second application just yesterday, I think it was. Um, and the staff are still also confirming their eligibility. Application is included in the packet.
Kinata? It's spelled, I there's, I think there's a typo. The application says Kinata.
We'll correct that.
Okay, um, so there's one seat open? Are you still?
Well, I mean, I I was, I saw that eligible for appointment, thinking that the it wasn't, that one wasn't ineligible. One wasn't, one was eligible, one wasn't eligible. But I'm just saying, so but now you're just saying that you you've only vetted the eligibility of Seek and not.
Correct. This new application is still going through the process. Just staff are confirming their eligibility.
So do you want to look forward?
Uh, I mean, I just look, just looking at the two applications, one, having experience in human resources would kind of lean me towards that person on the Civil Service Commission. And so I I would still be comfortable making that appointment, but if you guys wanted to hold off and do interviews or come up with some other process, that makes sense too.
We haven't done interviews for.
Okay.
So do the commissioners want more time to review both applications?
I mean, I think I would because I when there was only one applicant, I didn't really put a ton of brain power into looking at the um, going through the resume of the candidate. Now that there's two candidates, I I'd like to remind myself of the committee and what the job duties are, and I don't know, it just seems like we should give both applicants a a a look over before we make a decision.
I did, but I think I'm okay. I mean, I would agree, I I, well, I think I could go either way, but I mean, I did just look over the resumes, but I I think I agree with Commissioner um Monier a little bit too, that that, you know, that one has significant experience that relates to this board compared to the other, so um, either way, yeah.
We can bring it back next week, give you a chance to review.
Next week, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So the next one was the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees Mason County Appointment. Once last week was whether or not Mason County intends to revisit the their appointment, um, and at this time, they do not.
What what does that mean? I was trying to understand that, I read the email, and we were we had a question about some type of legal matter, and we were asking them if they were going to revisit their recommendation. And we asked them if they were going to revisit that, and they said, no, we still want to make this recommendation, or was it on pause?
No, they they have already appointed this person to T R L. And so the uh, the other counties who are part of the.
And it's up to us to confirm that appointment?
Correct. And the other counties have.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mihia. I was looking at the paper.
I'm trying to uh find out a way to frame this. Um I have reached out um as well, and so I think just my recommendation would be uh to wait until the legal matter that Mr. Jewett is going through is is done, and we know the, so to put a pause on the appointment until we know the re- the results or the what happens with his legal matter. Um, so I think that's that would be my recommendation at this time, it would be to.
Is that like a, kind of, is that direction to staff that you're seeking concurrence on?
I I guess I'm I'm seeking concurrence from the board is just to hold until we know what happens with Mr. Tuitt's legal matter.
Commissioner Grant?
Well, I would agree. Um, I'm okay agreeing with that, Carolina. I um, but I also am interested to understand, so currently Mason County's appointment um is acting in that role. Um, and so if we were not to support that, it wouldn't really matter?
No.
The appointment must be confirmed by all of the counties in the T R L.
Or?
So they're not activated yet, right?
Correct.
They're only activated until everyone confirms, and so they need us to confirm in order to ac- actually put that person in play.
What are the next steps if we do not confirm?
Uh, we would inform T R L, we would inform Mason County. Um, they could um go back out for applications. Uh, they did have another applicant. Um, or they could pause on their, on their appointment and leave their seat vacant.
I would agree with Commissioner Mihia's proposal. I think I heard that there's like some, there's some video evidence related to what what went on, and I'd frankly like to see that before. Whether or not, no matter what the outcome of the case is, because cases sometimes resolve in ways that don't necessarily conform with justice or reality, but if there's video evidence of what occurred, that's what I'm more interested in, what did happen, not how the case gets resolved. But is this an appropriate person to be serving on the board? So uh, given that, for me, I'd I'd like to, I'm gonna see if I, I mean, at some certain point, that'll become a public document. It may not be now, but I'm not comfortable moving forward today on it myself.
So we, so we have the suggestion by Commissioner Mihia to, for staff to pause, then we would notify T L R and um Mason that we are pausing. Um, and until, until the board feels comfortable to bring it back. Just wanted to share, I'm gaining the support and the direction from a majority of the board to do that. So we would not be saying, we're just gonna wait. We're saying we're pausing until um the commissioners feel like this item has been resolved, which means this person will not be able to sit on the T L R board. Just put it into context for you.
Yeah, yeah, and we're not saying no either.
Right, you're not saying no, we're just pausing.
Is that the, I see five nods and thumbs. Okay, that's majority, or I'm sorry, unanimous uh directions.
Thank you so much for your.
Okay, then that brings us, is that, oh no, we have another one, or is that the only one?
That's all.
Okay, that's it, and then we're at Commissioner Items. We do have Commissioner check-in at eleven, so nothing on you. I would propose we just adjourn and then reconvene with any Commissioner Items at eleven. Commissioner Mihia?
Okay, well, that's fine. I know Commissioner Grant has has an item that, is that being?
I didn't send it. Oh, I didn't.
I did.
The county manager sent it.
I sent out, if you, if you wanted to talk about it at eleven or a weekend.
Oh, you mean the, okay, wait, there was the other thing I was thinking about, um, uh, about the today's bill?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The bill, I was talking about the bill. Yeah, that was the crisis, everybody. Uh, same thing, but um, sure, uh, the.
Sorry to confuse you.
No, I had another thing coming your way too. Um I, uh, Joe Avalos um reached out to Caroline and I um, and were uh asking if we would, either one of us would be willing to testify today for House Bill eighteen thirteen. Um, this House Bill, um, I I mean, I'm, I'm, more or less, this House Bill will streamline um and make it so that our Thurston Mason B H O, I'm just gonna put it in context here, that that um, that crisis, this new crisis services and the Medicaid funding and the different kinds of things that wrap around, um, designated crisis responders, mobile crisis teams, um, different pieces of the crisis system. Um, it need to be, there needs to be an update to language to say that, that the funding for that will be managed at the local level. And um, and this bill um will make that happen. Uh, Representative Dolio, and at least partially, uh, Representative Parshy, um, and um many other um, uh, reputable, you know, reputable um people who understand um health uh are supporting this bill. Um, as a previous, um, I'm very familiar with this, um, and Caroline and I said it would be okay if I testified. Just want to make sure we have support from all of you on this. Um, as a previous budget manager for the state of Washington and the person that used to work on this, this is an extremely critical bill for um us to move forward, and it will, if if anything, it will really um allow for our county to easily get more funding and um be able to ma- better manage our own local system as compared to the way that it's written right now. So that's.
Commissioner, for a little bit of di- additional background, Commissioner Grant sent an email um to me that I forwarded to all of you. So if you have a chance this afternoon, take a look at it. Joe Avalos has a great little paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I could read it if you wanted. I was like, ah.
But it does seem like it's in alignment with something we'd want to support. Um, I think the what we're looking for is just board concurrence, not final uh decision, but just board concurrence, that this would be something that we can support, so we can also cue our state lobbyists um to make sure that they're tracking and marking us down as supportive.
Yeah, that way, I think, as Rachel, uh, or Commissioner Grant, I apologize, Commissioner Grant testifies, um, she can say, you know, as a Thurston County Commissioner, I'm hearing, you know, with the full support of my board, uh, that usually weighs a little bit more heavily than just when it's one commissioner without, you know, the concurrence of their county. Um, I I also think that this bill is is very important. It's something that um the B H S O has been kind of seeking for a while, and so um I think it, you know, it it benefits us to to support this bill.
I I don't know enough about it, but if I'm hearing from the two of you that it's something that we should be supporting, I I believe that.
Yeah, I can read the um summary and maybe come back and we'll touch base on it at eleven, the commissioners check in.
And if we could do that at the beginning, I, uh, they're ask, uh, both Deb and Joe are asking um to put me on, you know, to to sign us up and um need to kind of do that by eleven thirty, twelve.
Yeah.
I have to testify at one thirty.
Okay, alright. I I think that I'm fine with it, I mean, what you're describing, but I I know you just, I I did see the paper and I'll just want to go through it. If I have a problem, I'll bring it up at eleven, but otherwise, I'm good to register against.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, so we're good on that. Anything else for this, this particular session?
The only thing I have is there, there's a letter that's going around that I'd like to see everybody sign on to and sent out to the local fire departments for uh, the passing of Brett Jackson. He was one of our medics that lost his life over the weekend, so.
From where?
Uh, fell off a roof.
But from?
He was retired just this last year. Yeah, I'm sure you met him. He was with J W a whole bunch at campaign events. He's a good friend of mine.
Yeah, this has been a significant impact to
Yeah.
our uh first responder community locally and our emergency management uh services department, as he was very involved, um, well-beloved and liked, and so I think the sentiment um that Commissioner Fornier has to send a letter of condolence is a good, is a good step. Um, because we've heard from staff that it's, it hit them pretty hard.
Yeah, and it's, it's all your coworkers showing up to your then, and then the ripples throughout where there's other people back, feeling, it it was, it was, it was pretty rough.
Yeah.
He was building his daughter a house out in Yelm.
He just retired too.
Yeah.
It's very tragic.
It's very tragic, yeah. I'm in full support.
Okay, very good. So there are some, we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Then we're adjourned. We'll be back at eleven, and you can check in.